I would entertain a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Those who would care to join us, we will take the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the holy圣经. Thank you, and I would now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is public participation, and we have two presentations, and Larry is back, and he is going to give us a report on the farmer's market, their annual report. You ready, Larry? I thought he was, I thought he was right there in the anteroom there.
Showtime.
Showtime, ladies and gentlemen. So, about five months ago, I ate a, I was eating some raw almonds, and I bit into one, and I didn't know that raw almonds create cyanide, but it was, not raw almonds, but it was, this was a rancid almond or a bitter almond, which creates cyanide. So I bit into it, and it shot cyanide into my mouth and burned everything, and it was, next, about an hour later, my lips went numb. Next morning, I woke up and had Bell's palsy. So, that was about five months ago, but there is one cool thing about it, because all my life, I've been jealous of people that can raise just one eyebrow. Look at this. So anyway, I'm gonna do the best I can with this half of my lips not working, and the rest of it's going.
So Rob's gonna finish this up when we're done. Okay, here we go. So. Audience, participation please. Enjoying apple as we, if we hand it out.
Alright, here we go. Wait, come on. Keep going. Especially up here, because this really podium makes a lot of noise. That's it. That's it. Oxford farmer's market is an uptown, bringing lots of food to a hungry crowd each week. Choose nutrition and taste, not just filling your face, so you'll be dragging your can all over the place, singing, "We will, we will feed you." Sing with me. We will, we will feed you, feed you. Eggs in your basket, coffee in your cup, you won't go away empty-handed today. Students at Miami, people of the town, all have a place to have common ground, singing, "We will, we will feed you, feed you." We will, we will feed you, feed you. Farmers use bugs to eat other bugs, that's why pesticides can go away. It's not rude to ask about your food. Ask your farmer now, you will hear them say, "We will, we will feed you, feed you." We will, we will feed you, feed you. Everybody, we will, we will feed you. Alright.
Alright.
Thank you, ladies. Wait, Rob's gonna.
No, no, we're done.
We're done.
Well done.
So, that's my report. It's pretty much growing and growing and growing, just as the farmers do. We did drop off a check, as we always do each year, for our rent of the parking lot, and the graciousness of the city. Is there any question that you have for me?
Keep on keeping on.
Keep on keeping on. Alright. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay. Hard act to follow, but we have the McCullough Hyde Annual Report.
We will. But I did learn a couple of things. One, stay away from almonds, right? Number two, I hope those apples aren't a throw at us, because we're not doing so well, so. At least keep apples to yourself, but. Here, you want a couple extra, let's roll back. That's great, Larry, thank you.
Thank you so much, Larry.
So. There we go. So, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Mike Everett, administrator from McCullough Hyde Hospital. I've been here since about 2019, came in the spring. And I want to thank you for allowing myself and Tyler to get up and just give our annual report. And really, the purpose of this report is to talk about the things that are happening at the hospital, and to understand why the hospital exists. And the hospital exists to solely serve the healthcare needs of the community. And it's the only reason why we're here, is to serve the needs of the community. And I hope with this presentation, you'll come away with a little bit of the knowledge, some of the good work that's been going on, and some of the great work that's been going on at the hospital, and that you have a sense of satisfaction of knowing that you've got quality care close to home.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. My name is Tyler Wash. I'm the executive director of the McCullough Hyde Foundation. And as Mike said, you know, we're here to share about all the things both the hospital's doing and the foundation, as we continue to serve the community. You know, I'd like to start back. I'm a history buff, but I won't take too much time on this, but I want to take us back to 1937, when the McCullough sisters, Daisy and Elizabeth, and the Hyde family, Benjamin and Catherine, came together and decided that Oxford and the surrounding areas needed a hospital. And if you look back in the documents, it says, in each of their individual last wills and testaments, "I direct my trustees to make an annual report to the village council of the municipality of Oxford." So in that spirit, eighty-five years later, we're here today, doing exactly what these wonderful people ask us to do. So continuing on the trend of talking about the McCullough sisters and the Hyde family, you know, one thing that I like to talk about when we're talking about the foundation is vision statements. We've all been a part of organizations that's went through strategic plans and meetings, and came up with a vision statement for their organization. Well, ours was set back in 1937. The, in each of their wills, again, they said the exact same words. "Your vision, your mission, is to aid in the alleviation of human suffering, without distinction of race, color, or creed." And we've been doing that for eighty-five years, and the hospital's been around now for sixty-five years. And we continue that tradition. What else was set out back in 1937 was the purpose. It was to support McCullough Hyde Hospital. First, it was to build it, then it was to maintain it, then it was to support it, and the communities located in Butler and Preble County, and Ohio, and Franklin and Union Counties in Indiana. And that's exactly what we're doing today. Twenty-twenty-two, we're achieving exactly what these families set out in 1937. Today, the board of trustees of the foundation is set up to not only monitor the foundation, but is made up of community members. You see on the left, many names you probably recognize from other organizations and other things, both in Oxford and the surrounding areas. I do want to point out publicly that tonight, we have our chair, Tim McGowan, vice chair, Mary Butterfield, and former chair, Steve Snyder, with us. It's an excellent group that not only represents the hospital, but represents this community in everything they do. Mike?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Tyler. So, I'll point out the leadership of the board of directors for the hospital. We have John Ward, who's the chair. He is a TriHealth vice president. And you have Steve Snyder, who's the vice chair. Steve Gracie is the TriHealth attorney. Michael Crofton is the treasurer. Mark Klimic, Helen Kasalka, Steve Monbach, Mitris Powell, and Brad Schultz, Dr. Schultz, and then the senior leadership. And you can see us there with Tim out enjoying one of our events. I think that was the concert.
Music festival.
Music festival, yeah. So. In preparation for this, I love history as well, so I went back to the annual, the annual report given to the city in nineteen sixty-five. John Lane was the administrator at that time, and he had talked with his board about how, since the hospital opened in fifty-seven, the, it was initially open as an inpatient care unit, but they saw the need to really transform towards more ambulatory footprint and more outpatient. And it's interesting, because they were really forward-thinking, which has helped us today to meet the volumes that we have. We currently have over three hundred and fifty credentialed physicians at any time that could come to the hospital to provide medical care. When you look at the imaging procedures, in nineteen sixty-five, we did a little bit over four thousand, seven hundred. Today, we do over twenty-two thousand. Surgical procedures, you can see the growth there. The ER visits, which is interesting, fourteen thousand versus the twenty-five hundred. Laboratory procedures is probably the biggest, and that's a big outpatient procedure. We do well over two hundred thousand today compared to nineteen thousand back in sixty-five. And, and what I like about is the fact that we're still a full-service hospital with comprehensive medical care. We have an OB/Mob baby unit on the floor, and each year, three hundred and sixty-five babies take their first breath of life here in Oxford. At sixty-five, two hundred and twenty-one. Back in nineteen sixty-five, we had eighty team members. Today, we have over three hundred and forty-three. And what's interesting, I was born in sixty-five, so this is kind of fifty-seven years ago. And I just want to say that the team really laid the foundation and the groundwork for us to serve our community. And we solely exist for the community. There's no other reason for us. And if we don't earn the goodwill and give people reasons to come into our hospital, then we don't need to be here. And to that point, our signature experience at the hospital are our team members. People come to the hospital because of the patient experience they get with our team members. And that snapshot down there is a latest engagement of our team members at the hospital. And ninety-two point six of them says that the work that they do gives them personal accomplishment. Eighty-seven point three intend to stay with McCullough Hyde for the next twelve months. I'm proud to work at McCullough Hyde is eighty-seven point three. I would recommend McCullough Hyde is a great place to work, eighty-two point five. With an overall average of eighty-seven point four, which is the highest in the trihealth system for team member engagement. That is really what, what I want to make sure we take away from, is our teams are leading with purpose. They truly want to improve the health of our community. And I want to highlight two team members. One is Sharon Klein, who's retired after forty-two years of service at the hospital. Amazing stat, forty-two years, almost in sixty-five, right? And the other one is Eric Klein, who's retired after almost thirty years as respiratory manager. We have a lot of longstanding team members that really care about the job and the work they do in serving the community. And our mission is to improve the health of the communities we serve. And we take a serve mental attitude, right? Because at McCullough Hyde Hospital, we want to create a place that the community comes to for care. We want to create a place that physicians choose to come to practice. We want to create a place that our team members choose to come serve. And we really have the servant attitude to really lead with courtesy and compassion. And I'm just gonna highlight briefly, I could talk about a lot of things, but this is just recent recognitions that the hospital's received. And one of them I'm gonna start with is the nationally recognized safety score of an A with the leapfrog safety scores. That comes out twice a year. It surveys over three hundred, oh, sorry, three thousand hospitals nationwide. And they give you a letter grade of A, B, C, or D based upon the quality of care, based upon the patient experience, based upon what's considered hospital-acquired conditions, meaning you didn't come in with something, but you acquired it when you got in there. It could be a UTI. It could be a bed sore. It could be a lot, a lot of things. We just recently got our second A, which speaks to that safety and quality. The other really thing that I want to point out is the extraordinary nurses that McCullough Hyde Hospital has. We recently captured what's called magnet recognition or designation. That is an elite designation to have. Only eight percent of nurses or hospitals in the world have that designation. And that's where you empower nurses for the care of the patient. You empower nurses for process improvements. That's where you allow nurses to practice at the top of their game, and make sure we have those quality outcomes. We probably wouldn't have that A without the outstanding nursing care that we have at the hospital. We're also accredited with the crediting bodies. Maybe first steps. We have three of the five stars within Ohio to get first steps programs. We've recently qualified for a designation of acute stroke-ready hospital, meaning now we're allowed to have protocols in place that if one of our residents in our service community is having a stroke, we've got the processes and procedures in place, the equipment, the medication, to allow for recovery, because we all know that minutes mean brain cells, and we want to make sure we're saving lives. We're a four out of five stars with CMS. We receive designations from the payers for the quality of care. Payers are now paying a lot on the quality care given, making sure that the outcomes are what are what's intended. And then last, I'll finish with the Miami University award that President Crawford awarded us for our behind-the-scenes work over the last couple of years, to make sure we served our community, our students during COVID. Quality care close to home. So, like I said earlier, we are a full-service hospital. You know, we have a twenty-four-seven emergency department. We have, you know, I don't want to go through all of these. There's some that I'll, that I'll highlight, some recent affiliations with Cincinnati Children's. Cardiology at the hospital now is a specialty clinic. We also do hematology work for children. We're just a full-service hospital. We don't do open hearts. We don't have a cath lab. That's advanced specialty care, but we are a community hospital to care for the needs of the community. And an expansion and growth. Some of the things we've recently opened are on the left. I want to highlight a couple of people to the right. That's Tim Richen and Heather Mandrell. Some of you may know them. They went to Talawanda High School. They went to Miami University. They went off to medical school in Akron, practicing, and they wanted to come home. They wanted to come home and hang their shingle here in the Oxford area and be pediatricians in our communities. And they're now seeing patients out in Brookville and in Oxford. We want to continue to throw the practice around our physicians. We have several other new physicians that are going to be joining us here in March, a general surgeon, a couple more primary care doctors. We want to continue to expand our medical footprint, to give people reasons to want to come here. We opened a wound care clinic at the hospital, so people that need it, advance wound care healing, and some treatments, don't have to drive out of town. We're seeing well over a hundred patients a month now with that program, and we're adding additional days. Offer pain management. One of the things that COVID shut us down, when we had to shut everything down, was our College Corner location. That's back up and running now. It's been up and running since May, and it's been going extremely busy, seeing certain residents there. And we just want to continue to expand the services in Oxford and on the goodwill of the community, because that's what we're here for. Now it's your turn.
Hey, thanks.
Heat your apples to yourself, please.
Thank you. So you know, we have to ask ourselves, you know, how does the foundation support all this awesome work that Mike just talked about? And it's through two primary ways. One is through the grants that you can see on the screen. And like Mike, I won't go through every one of them, but you can see examples of partnering with the hospital and partnering with TriHealth to make sure that facilities and equipment are at the best they can possibly be through grants. The other thing I'm proud of is over eighty thousand dollars worth of scholarships have went out in the recent months to team members. That's everything from conferences to obtaining a master's degree. And that's about sixty team members that are community members, that we're providing education dollars for them to become trained in their specialty and stay right here in Oxford and McCullough Hyde. And the other part of it is, and Mike talks a lot about the team members, and a lot of it goes back to how inspired the foundation is because of the leadership and the team members there that make us want to grow our impact year after year. One stat I would like to share, that two fiscal years ago, the foundation gave around three hundred thousand dollars. And through a strategic decision of the board with still sound financial management, we were able to up that to eight hundred thousand dollars last fiscal year. So we're able to give back to our community hospital because of the generosity of the community to give funds. Next line? And this is just a snapshot of how generous this community is. And you talk to any nonprofit in town, they're gonna say the same thing, that folks in Oxford and the surrounding areas are givers. They're philanthropists. They understand that money goes a long way in our community. So two examples of that, as you can see, the newly created funds over the past several months. You noted, you may note some of those names are treasured community members, and how they support our hospital. The second is our annual fundraising campaign. Just like any nonprofit, we rely on annual gifts, year in and year out, to expand our mission. I'm happy to say two stats here. One, we had a record-breaking chef celebration a couple weeks ago. Over two hundred and fifty community members gathered at the art center, and that night, we were able to raise over a hundred thousand dollars to put back into our community's hospital. The second thing is a ONE campaign that we run each year. You've probably never heard of the ONE campaign. It's our internal team member campaign. And this year, McCullough Hyde had the highest participation rate of any trihealth hospital. So our team members see the value of giving back to McCullough Hyde. Now let's talk about the foundation's role in the greater community. And one example of this is the securing of a two million dollar grant with the help of the consortium. You can see the hospital, Miami, the Coalition, Talawanda School District, Butler County Mental Health Board, to bring two million dollars to support mental and behavioral health. This is one example of the way that partnerships are important in this community, to come together and find local solutions to these major problems that we're having. And the foundation is happy to be able to provide some of that backend philanthropic support. The coalition members are scheduling a time to come talk to you all more, so I won't, I won't spend too much time about this exciting adventure, but we'll be back soon with some experts to talk about that. And finally, that's right, finally, on the community side, is the foundation, the hospital, partner together to support a variety of community events in our service area, both here in Oxford and all the communities that the hospital serves. And you can see on the screen a snapshot of that. And the other thing is, several years ago, both virtually and in person, through a joint collaboration, we started hosting community roundtables to engage the community, to hear feedback, to have conversations. And we've been doing those twice a year, and many of you have attended those before. Our next one's gonna be in the spring, and I hope that you all would consider joining us at the hospital, because it's always fun conversation to be had. So, these are some of the ways that we're out there in the community, partnering together, foundation, hospital, to support the communities that we serve. Mike?
Alright, thanks, Tyler. So as we start to wrap this up and open it up for some questions, I can't not highlight our Oxford area volunteers who do a phenomenal job. We have about a hundred and fifty current volunteers that come to the hospital. They raise funds to buy equipment. Right now, our auxiliary is gonna be buying some OB beds. We're gonna upgrade some of the OB beds that we have in our unit. And they play an extremely important role in the history, and, you know, it's contributed, just through the volunteers, over a million dollars. So we give them a big shot. And then you can see some of the community partnerships. And really, McCullough Hyde Hospital is not a relationship, one to the communities that it serves, to its fellow citizens, right? And how do we partner and work together to improve the health of others? You see the Oxford Free Clinic, which we support at the hospital. I don't have all of the numbers. I talked about there, but it's over thousands of people that we serve each year with either prescriptions filled, eyeglasses, you know, other medical tests that they couldn't otherwise pay, and that continues. We have nursing with Miami. We're involved in other programs to help develop some of the students there. We're looking at other programs to help develop some physician assistants and others as we work, work through all of that. One of the things that we do also in our community is we provide what's called athletic trainer contracts for the local high schools. So we do Talawanda, Ross, we have Franklin and Union County, where we have athletic trainer, physical therapists that walk the sidelines at their sporting events. They provide care. They, they help, you know, give advice. Currently with Talawanda, we're gonna be, I think we're gonna be paying for their strength and conditioning coach, and some food nutrition courses. But we just want to make sure that we're giving back to our community, and we're helping in that regard. So, a lot of involvement in our community. And Miami partnership, as I pointed out, the student health is up there, the clinicians, the services. We work very closely with the university, and they're a good partner. And I want to get to the last slide, because I know we've probably gone a little bit long, and I want to really thank you for your time. But this came from the nineteen sixty-seven Oxford Press, and I'm gonna turn it around a little bit. McCullough Hyde's really fortunate to have the support of the community, but we know that's not forever, and we have to continue to earn that, right? And if this hospital is going to exist, we have to continue to have the support of the community. We're gonna have to continue to have those relationships to go forward, because a lot's changed from when the hospital was first opened. With the reimbursement cuts, with what's happened in healthcare since the twenty-ten Affordable Care Act, you can see just some around us, Reed Healthcare, or in the Brookville. You see Fort Hamilton coming into Oxford as well. There's a lot of competition, right? We're here for the goodwill of the community, and we give with a purpose, and we lead with a purpose. And we need to make sure that we continue to take what we do as sacred work. We take it serious. And we want to continue to be your community hospital. And if we're gonna have another sixty-five years, we gotta continue to do that. We'll stop here, and Tyler, if you'll come on back over, in case they have questions, and apple, please.
Mike, thank you very much for the presentation. Does anyone have questions for Mike or Tyler? I know that on behalf of the city manager and myself, we want to especially appreciate the fact that you engage in the leadership meetings that we have monthly, so the leaders in the community are able to communicate and know what's, what's going on. And you've been a good partner in that process, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
And if I could just, I mean, those of us who live the community know that some of the best times in life, and sometimes the most difficult times in life, happen in relation to McCullough Hyde, but it's nice that, for that to happen here. My daughter was born almost eighteen years ago in McCullough Hyde. But I think about this in terms of economic development. We've been doing searches on campus, and the ability to convince, you know, let people know that we have a full-service hospital in a town this size helps us be a community that people want to live in. So beyond the health, I think like the success of our community really benefits from a healthy McCullough Hyde, so thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming. And thank you to the board members, especially your former mayor.
Glad to see you here.
Alright, now we will move to other public comments. And so if you are here and would like to make a comment on anything that is not on the agenda, or if it's on the consent agenda, you can come now, as this beautiful young woman is doing, and.
Flattering will get you everywhere.
Give us your, your name and where you live, and we'll be glad to give you five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Peggy Branster. I live in eighteen Minute Circle. I didn't come prepared to talk, but this is an opportunity I can't put down, because I have to talk about my favorite subject. And I hope Tyler's listening, because this should sound familiar. Rooftop solar is my big passion, and the TriHealth physicians' offices on Morning Sun Road have some of the best facing-south roofs for solar that I've ever seen. Does this sound a little familiar? So I'm just gonna bring that up again. If we're going to get to zero carbon in Oxford, we're gonna have to increase the number of rooftop solar that we've got. That's the only way we're gonna get there. So this is an opportunity to think ahead and join, join the effort.
Thank you, Peggy. Much appreciated. The city's on board. We're working on that, too. Anyone else wish to address council? Anne, welcome.
Anne Fur. I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knowles. I timed this statement, but I'm gonna stop mid-sentence if you have to give me the cut signal, Ms. Navy. I really appreciate and thank you for your equal opportunity practice of everyone getting five minutes for public comment. I'm here to congratulate and thank members of council as part of my squeaky-wheelness, and to let you know that an invitation is coming. I'm the facilitator for Oxford Citizens for Peace and Justice. On Saturday night, OCPJ recognized Vice Mayor Raghu with one of our annual peace and justice awards. A second award went to Shauna Rosenberg, who is a member of two of the city's commissions. Although they each make unique contributions, both Chantal and Shauna work within the structure of city government and outside of that structure to address basic survival needs, food, clothing, and shelter of vulnerable, but really all, members of the community through sustainable practices that keep food waste or fabrics out of landfills. They work seemingly tirelessly, contributing their time, energy, and homes to redistributing resources, to working in solidarity with those living in poverty. This is the inclusive, human rights-based leadership that OCPJ advocates. I empathize with some of the challenges that you as council members have in your roles. I know what it's like to be a representative elected to work collaboratively with administrative staff to allocate resources to serve constituents. For six of the thirty-nine years I was a faculty member at Miami, I was elected to university senate. I did, of course, advocate views of members of my department, sometimes with their agreement, sometimes receiving opposition. I also knew that sometimes, especially when confronting the need for change in policies to address social injustices, it's important to work on an ad hoc basis outside of the structure of formal governance. For example, I worked many hours with three other faculty, including a straight ally, on an ad hoc task force to push President Garland to promote the need for domestic partner benefits to Miami's board of trustees. Finally, in two thousand and four, my family was able to have the same benefits as did my married straight colleagues. OCPJ is going to invite members of council to collaborate with us too this spring, do some civics one-on-one education, so that the public will be very active here in five-minute bursts every two weeks, but also so we can help to expand programs like the living room conversations that councilors Franklin and French have begun, and to amplify the voices of those. that councilors Franklin and French have begun, and to amplify the voices of those who serve on boards and commissions. Ultimately, though, without ordinances, council and the public are only in advisory roles or in witnessing roles when we observe injustices. The access to information and resources that you provide, Councilor Bracken, is essential and very much appreciated. Councilor Ellerby, your statements of principles that guide your votes help me to examine the wisdom when I disagree with you. And Councilor Prithurch, your clarification of the processes of retreats and work sessions to set goals and priorities increase transparency. But it's not enough, it's just not enough. There are many injustices and elephants in the room. I've attended and spoken at meetings of at least four different commissions. My comment at the last meeting of the Housing Advisory Commission was called out by the chair, a valued colleague with whom I collaborated when I was Director of TOPPS. He saw the reaction on my face when the agenda item was whether the commission should meet less frequently. He asked my opinion, and I made a simple comment, quote, "It seems to me that if housing for all is a high priority for the city, the Housing Advisory Commission should meet on a regular basis," end quote. Of course, I know that if the role of the commission is limited to advising when staff and council make decisions, infrequent meetings may be fine, and if it is difficult to find a time when everyone can meet, and one of the absent members of the commission is Director of a social service agency who is overburdened by trying to meet survival needs of underserved residents, and that person responsibly gives priority to their job, it's tempting to say, let's meet every other month. I'll continue to be a squeaky wheel.
Thank you very much, Anne. You used your time well. Is there anyone else who would like to take up the five minutes? Welcome.
Hello, my name's Lauren Zillis, I live on 431 Churchill Trail. I am a junior at Miami University studying history and, with minors in political science and social justice. This past semester, I've been working on a action project for one of my classes. I've been working with Councilor Franklin, Councilor French, and it, and they had invited me to kind of present my project to the council. So, for my project, I knew I wanted to do something kind of centered for the Oxford community. I work off-campus, so I do spend quite a lot of time with a lot of the local women in the area, and then after the events from the summer, I knew I wanted to do something specifically directed towards women. So, with kind of like a few things in progress, I created these brochures about, it kind of centered around public intellectualism and activism, and just kind of educating on like reproductive rights, the historical context, our like current laws, and how we can help, resources, if anyone needs anything in the local area. And I brought copies, if you guys would like some, okay.
Sure we would.
I'm afraid I don't have enough for everyone, so, but if you would like them, feel free to like keep it. There's still some tweaks that you need to make, but, so yeah, so that was kind of the final result of the project, and I plan on, when I come back for the J-term in January, to kind of furthering this even more, and kind of displaying them in different areas around the community. So far, I've dropped it off at TOPPS already, I've been in contact with Jerry Martin, so I have that first location, so if you guys have any suggestions on where else in the community I could display these, I would love to hear those as well, but, kind of in January, I'll be like kicking and finding more places for that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sounds like you did a great project.
Thanks.
Can I request, when you finish it off, digital copies, though?
Yeah, 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 of course, yeah, for sure. I can get that, and I can, if you guys want like contact information, Councilor French and Franklin have that.
Yeah, either through Alex, or you can go through Heather, as our clerk, of course.
Alright, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council? Okay, thank you all for coming, and for those who presented to us, we appreciate it very much. I would now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, does anyone wish to remove an item? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. It is approved, and we will move then to resolutions, and you may read the first one when you're ready.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to waive parking meter fees throughout the city from 9:00 AM on Monday, December 12th, 2022, until 8:00 PM on Monday, January 2nd, 2023. The two-hour and 10-hour restrictions for the parking meters shall remain in effect.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and chief?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. This is our annual resolution to provide free parking and parking meters. We, in the past, always did it just for the uptown meters, and last year, we extended it just to all meters. It really made sense with the demands and parking. With having the smart meters, we don't actually put bags over the meters as we did in the past, it simply displays free holiday parking, and we advertise it on social media as well, and try to get the word out when we see people parking, because there are some old meters that it doesn't display, but we just simply don't enforce the meter time during that.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this resolution before council? Seeing none, councilors?
It's just an informational question, this also includes the parking garage?
Yes.
Okay.
And does, are you still enforcing the time on the two-hour?
Yeah, so, so that's still in place. You know, during this time, our staffing level drops and people take off, but, you know, we look for the egregious violations of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, you may read number two.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Strand Associates Incorporated for the design and engineering of a water softening improvement for the city's water treatment plant at a cost of $1,670,000 with a contingency of $83,500 for a total not to exceed $1,753,500.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Mike, welcome.
Your Honor, thank you, members of council, good evening. The city has budgeted in our 2022 capital improvement budget, 2.37 million for this purpose, so that will pay for the design of the water softening plant, as well as some other incidental expenses at, at the plant, such as removing an underground storage tank for diesel fuel, and some other environmental issues that we have down there. It's rare that we get a water quality complaint from our water system, but we do hear frequently about the hard water that we have here in our natural water supply in the city. We contracted earlier this year with Strand Associates to do an analysis of our options. Strand looked at many factors, including water quality parameters, emerging contaminants including PFAS compounds or forever chemicals, the efficiencies and economies of various systems, water plant processes that may accommodate the softening, and waste material disposal. Many of these processes will create waste, some can be discharged directly to the environment, others would require treatment. Probably number one is the risk factor associated with corrosive water. With a system of our age where we still have a few lead service lines, we do not want to provide corrosive water that would eat away that scale on the interior of the pipe that helps protect the system. So, our water hardness is about 350 milligrams per liter, that's comparable with many communities in our region of southwest Ohio. There were four ways studied of how we could soften water. Strand did a thorough analysis of all of these, and we landed on alternative four membrane softening. This softening provides the most thorough treatment and softening, and can also address issues of concern for tomorrow with these emerging forever chemicals that you might be reading about. In addition to the softening, we studied buying wholesale water from the city of Hamilton, and also from southwest regional water district. In the final analysis, it was very clear that we should stick with our own treatment plant, improve and make as efficient as possible our raw water production wells, and support our own water system. Again, ultimately, alternative four was decided upon as the best for the city, and this introduces membrane cartridges that will soften the water. We can control how soft that is, down to zero if we wish, but most communities find around 120 microgram, or milligrams per liter is the best for their use, and that's about one-third of our natural water hardness. So, the city advertised for proposals for this contract, and this is a little different than what we usually do. Usually, we want to get the rock-bottom lowest price possible that we can get for equipment or vehicles or machinery. In this case, we're, we're buying talent, and so we want the best possible talent, it may not be the cheapest, but we need the best possible talent that can provide the best drawings and specifications for a construction project. With so much money, federal money flowing now, it's hard to get contractors, it's hard to get good quality engineers, because a lot of them are already working on, on other projects. So, in this case, we advertised, we formed a committee of the deputy service director, city engineer, our water treatment plant manager, and myself, and we interviewed two professional engineering firms for this contract. Strand Associates was by far the best presenter, and I'm confident they will do a great job for the city. They have broken down their contract and fees into several sections, including first selecting a membrane manufacturer. We have to decide on a manufacturer, and that will drive the design of the project. We will have to do pilot plant testing, so a little mini plant will be constructed and operated, and that will be a requirement from the EPA, so we can get our design proper to our natural resource here, excuse me, as well as measure corrosivity of the water, and again, that will drive the design. Engineering analysis will include corrosion control, permitting requirements with the It will provide 30, 60, and 90% drawing submittals for staff review and Ohio EPA review. It will cover bidding and award, and also construction management services if authorized by the city. An additional parameter, we wanted to make sure we have the Oaks Trail in proximity to the water treatment plant, and we want to make sure we minimize impact to the trail, both for the users and for the physical part of the trail, that hopefully we don't have to tear anything up that we just constructed. We tried to compare fees for other projects to, to get a handle on, is this really a fair contract? A contract has to be fair both, for both parties. We don't want to squeeze the contractor so hard that they can't make a profit, yet we want to get the best rate that we can for our ratepayers. In this case, there are a couple other very close, closely related projects in Marietta and Miami'sburg. Contract fees for the design of those contracts is very similar to what has been proposed for this contract. So, we're confident we have a, a fair rate, it's well enough for the contractor to do what they need to do, and give us a thorough and professional product. There's a breakdown, I know that's hard to read, but there's a breakdown of the six main tasks associated with the project, and a comparison to the other Marietta, Marietta I wanted to give you one last slide, and this is hard to read at a distance, but it's some of the Ohio EPA metrics from 2021. And one of the not-so-great ones that I want to share with you is the water mean breaks per 10 miles of pipe, and we have a rating of 3.3, and that's somewhat high compared to our counterparts in southwest Ohio. So, we have a, especially in the mile square, a aging water distribution system, it's prone to some breaks. Some of our extensions like to Springwood are very prone to breaks, so there are a couple of issues there to be aware of, because those could have an impact on future costs to operate the system. But what is great news for today is the operating ratio of expenses to revenues, and Oxford's at 0.67. You want to be below one, you don't want to be spending more than you're making. So, we are the number one ranked water system compared to these comparable water systems in southwest Ohio or, or other small college towns. I wanted to share that because there should be confidence that we can afford to do this. This contract will not have a significant impact on rates, but when we go to the construction contract, that will be 17 to 18 million dollars, and that will have an impact on rates, so. I'll talk with the city manager and finance director about a rate study, but that's something that should be completed in the future. So, Matt Smith, the professional engineer with Strand Associates is here tonight, if you have any technical questions or something I've not covered. Matt, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, well, first, thank you very much for the consideration. As some of you might recall, I was here a little over a year ago to talk in a little more detail about how the analysis between the different softening methods went, and how we ended up on membrane softening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have about the process, water softening in general, how we're going to proceed with this, so.
I have one question.
Sure.
So, when this facility is completed, and we're ready to, to move our water system through it?
Yes.
Is, is there a transition period that will be difficult for the community? I'm just aware of Flint, Michigan, and others that have changed-
Yeah.
-water system.
There should not be. Now, you're going to be making a change to your water quality, and there's a lot, and a lot of what's in our contract, and a lot of what you have to do with the EPA is geared specifically to make sure that those impacts are minimized. I mean, certainly any sort of issues with corrosivity, like what Mike mentioned, or lead and copper issues, or anything like that, are dealt with during the design phase, so that-
So, for the consumer, it will be fairly seamless?
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay.
You know, I don't want to promise it's going to be perfect, but, but yeah, I mean, it should be, and there's a lot of communities that have gone through this process, and we've gone through this process with them, so it's pretty well established.
For the homeowner that, who- For the homeowner that who has a water softening system in their home?
Yes.
What will the impact of this be, if any?
I think that a lot of public outreach should be done to educate them and say, hey, you know, you're softening on a, you know, on a broad scale, and so they can either get rid of their softeners or certainly turn them down such that they soften less. You know, the intent here is that you would provide water that's really good to go. Yeah, exactly, that, you know, for, certainly for certain industrial processes or maybe some of the chiller units or whatever that the university has, they might want to augment the softening, but by and large, household softening should go away and be reduced significantly. I would certainly throw my softener away if...
We will do a several-months marketing campaign. We'll do several months of informing the public of our intentions and when we have a confidence level of when the softened water will be delivered to the customer, along with technical data for their softener. So they will know what the new grains of hardness will be so they can make adjustments to their softener if they wish to continue using it.
Okay.
We will make all that information known.
I thought you would. Would anyone else have questions?
Yeah, so I just want to reiterate that because that'd be really nice that if someone were on the verge of investing in a unit, they would know they don't have to do it. And the economics of not having to have a unit versus a marginal increase in their rates, it'd be really nice to communicate that. So real quickly, a technical question. I know we talked about this before, but it's been a year. So does this also involve a discharge to Four Mile Creek and treatment of this discharge, or does that go to the sanitary, whatever your backwashing or however the membrane works?
That's one of the beauties of the membrane softening is we're confident that we can discharge directly to the stream without treatment. Some of the others, like ion exchange, would have required treatment, and to not do so would have been an automatic violation, so. Membrane is, that's one of the true advantages of this.
So does it require an NPDES permit, or?
Yeah, yeah, it does, and if you look at our, and there's really two different ways to do it. You could sit, so the way a membrane works is it, it works like a sieve, if you will, at like the molecular level. So what comes out of the membrane is really pure water. The other's no, nothing really in it. And so what you do is you take, you take maybe fifty percent of the water that you have that goes to the membrane, and then the rest blends back, and then you have that concentrate that comes out. And so what you can do with the concentrate is you can either send it to the wastewater treatment plant. Our preference is to not do, and the city's preference is to not do that because it just takes up capacity at your wastewater treatment plant, and your treatment plant doesn't really treat that water. It's just, you know, your treatment plant doesn't remove calcium or magnesium. So, so yeah, we did work with O EPA to at least get them to tell us it should be okay to discharge to Four Mile Creek, but that's one of the first things that's in our scope of services is finalizing that. And it would have an NPDES permit. Those, the requirements for that permit are pretty straightforward. There's, you know, I think weekly or monthly sampling and that sort of thing. It's not like a wastewater permit where it's daily sampling and a lot of oversight, so.
One of the negatives of this membrane sampling is it uses a lot more raw water. But an attribute of that is when we discharge to Four Mile Creek, there's times in the summer when the creek's still and needs water, and we'll be able to contribute water, so it should improve the health of the stream, especially in the summertime.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who wants to address this resolution? Counselors, have any other questions, comments?
I do. I've been waiting seven years for this. Thank you very much. I know the community's been waiting decades for this.
Yep.
So I can't wait until you guys start this, and the faster this gets done, the better.
I neglected to speak of the schedule. Once council awards a contract, it's probably going to be about twelve months to get the design complete, and the EPA is a little bit of a wild card of getting our pilot plant set and then accepting all of our data. So there'll be other expenses with permitting with the EPA. But once that all happens, construction for this project is going to be eighteen months.
Yeah, it's eighteen to twenty-four months, it kind of depends.
But the project is probably going to be about three years before you notice the impact of what we do tonight.
Thank you.
So we have to keep hauling our salt bags for a few more years.
For a little bit longer.
But there's an end in sight.
Right, there's an end in sight.
You ready to vote? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you both very much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Oxford Township Butler County, Ohio, and authorizing the city of Oxford to provide fire protection and emergency medical services to Oxford Township pursuant to the terms of the agreement.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
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 Thank you very much. And Doug?
Yes, thank you. So the fire chief and I met some time ago with Gary Salmon, who's president of the Oxford Township trustees, to discuss a new agreement for the provision of fire and EMS services in the unincorporated portion of the township. We have a current agreement that expires on December thirty-first, 2022, and I'm happy to say that we reached an agreement on a new contract. It'll be a two-year contract as opposed to three years because, as you know, I've mentioned before that we're going to be looking at proposing that we add some additional firefighters, and that will require new funding. So we suggested a two-year contract. They've agreed to a two-year contract, got a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars a year. This is based on, we look at the fire and EMS expenditures, and then we minus, subtract out the EMS billing revenue, and that leaves us an amount that we then apply this six-point-seven-four, six-point-seven-four percent, which represents the number of total calls that they had in the unincorporated portion of the township. So, to make a long story short, they've agreed to this amount, and they agreed at their November sixteenth meeting. You have on the agenda then a resolution to authorize me to sign a new contract with the township trustees, and I would recommend adoption of that resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors?
I guess I would just say that there's this model that we have with neighboring jurisdictions to affix a price for the services that are provided to them. And I don't know how many calls the township gets or makes, but you are able to negotiate. And so when we look at what the shortfalls are in our fire and EMS and how to supply them, and where the majority of the calls are going to a neighboring jurisdiction like Miami University, I hope that we can enter into a similar conversation. We're well-practiced in talking to other jurisdictions about the best way to, for that reciprocal benefit.
I think council's a hundred percent behind the idea of negotiating with that said neighboring district.
It's a good point.
Thank you. Yes, that's a very important point. Are there any other comments or questions? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, resolution is adopted. And number four resolution, you can read when you're ready.
A resolution placing a moratorium not to exceed twelve months on vape and smoke establishments or shops within the city of Oxford, Ohio.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Absolutely.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Jessica?
Good evening, counselors. So this, we've been working on this for a while, and the Coalition for a Healthy Community has expressed concern about the high number of tobacco and vape shops in our community, and also the number of youth who've been able to access nicotine products. The CDC has stated concern over youth and vape and e-cigarettes, and they've stated that nicotine, as we know, is highly addictive and can harm adolescent brain development. The Coalition has been working with the Butler County Health District, excuse me, the Butler County General Health District, on possible legislation for Oxford, and we've been researching it, and this legislation would help possibly increase enforcement and possibly help us restrict the number of shops of this nature. However, it's not easy and it's timely to like make sure we're doing it right. Because of nicotine's negative public health impacts, we recommend a moratorium to prohibit any new tobacco or vape shops for twelve months. This pause will allow us time to work with the Butler County General Health District to discuss and review the details of the public health legislation that they're proposing and to kind of work out all of those details. I do want to be clear that it will not close any current tobacco or vape shops, and if there's a current lease and there's a place that not open, that place will be allowed to open. But what it will do hopefully is prevent any new tobacco and vape shops becoming from opening. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? The horse is a little bit out of the barn on this one.
Horse is.
Yeah, a dozen horses are out of the barn, but I hope that we can get some serious work done during the moratorium. Any other?
Have y'all gone inside the vape stores?
Yeah, I went in this past weekend, poked around and asked about products. And back in 2018, I had organized a meeting in Hamilton about substance abuse and at the YWCA, and we had officers come in and talk about the common things that kids are using to hide whatever substance they want in it, and those are all over all those vape shops. So the, and I should preface this with, I think marijuana should be legalized. This is not an anti-marijuana thing, but when we look at the health problems that are bound to come about when we have legalized marijuana, this will be, could be even worse than nicotine. Some of the early studies are showing. So I'm really glad that this is on the table. And whenever you talk to the people who work there, in their words, they said it's kind of insane how easy it is to get a permit to open up. And there's so much, they're starting to out-compete each other, and one of them is going to be opening twenty-four hours coming up soon. So they said, I think they're starting that this month to see if they can out-compete other places. And when I was talking to them about why it is that there's so many here, they had said, well, I guess the taxation in Indiana is much higher. Is that right, in Ohio?
The what?
The taxation.
The cigarette tax, I'm not sure.
So that was at least the information I had gotten, that they're incentivized to come here because taxation is lower, and they basically said that they're sitting on a gold mine. So the paper that I forwarded to Doug last month about talking about the clustering and trying to make it as equitable as possible whenever we look at shops like this, and so it's not going to be just disadvantaged neighborhoods and end up getting all of them as we go forward, and looking at what we can do about different fees and trying to feed that back into the neighborhoods that are going to be more affected. There's a lot of information out there on things that we can do. So this is awesome to give us enough time so that we can try to make it more equitable and safer going forward.
Other comments or questions?
Well, I mean, it's funny that the straw that crakes the camel's back, but it's like, we should have realized when there were five of them within a block of here. There was something about six that was a magic number when we just realized, because sometimes you think, well, this is cresting.
Well, now we're at like twelve.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm just saying with one block of here. And so you sometimes think, well, this is cresting, it couldn't get worse, but I don't think we can count on that. So this, a moratorium is a great way to take a pause. I mean, I think at a certain point, we really need to look at the options and whether we regulate the locations, what our goal is out of inordinance or ordinances, but a moratorium gives us time, buys us a little bit of time. So thank you for acting as quickly as you could.
Well, I might share, I shared this with the mayor when we met Friday, but I did a little research too. I got online to see if I could buy a vape pen and the cartridges or whatever, and all I had to do was say, yeah, I'm over twenty-one, and I could purchase them online. And so, you know, there's a bigger issue out there.
Yeah. Okay, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of the resolutions say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the resolution's adopted. Now we will move to ordinances on first reading, and if you will read the first one, please.
An ordinance accepting and taking legal title to Oxford Cemetery upon the dissolution of the Oxford Cemetery Association and declaring an emergency.
Okay, and because this is declaring an emergency, we will need a motion and a second.
To move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. For the public's edification, because it's an emergency, it requires six votes in order to pass, and then it would take effect immediately, and that's what it means to be an emergency. And Doug, are you going to discuss this one?
Yeah, so we've discussed this before, in fact, several council meetings ago. You adopted a resolution authorizing myself as city manager to sign a management agreement with the president of the Oxford Cemetery Association. I did report that, you know, it's been executed, but actually it has not. Their lawyer had some questions, so we'll see if that gets signed. But what you have on the agenda tonight is really the most important piece of legislation. You have an ordinance before you accepting and taking legal title to the Oxford Cemetery upon the dissolution of the Oxford Cemetery Association and declaring an emergency. Chris Allison, who is the president of the Oxford Cemetery Association, already has authority to do that. So once he signs that deed and we record it, we will actually own it. So we're actually in a transition period now. We've had several meetings, staff and I, with Chris Allison that I mentioned before, and the former Oxford Cemetery manager. We've received records already. We, Jessica and her staff have been working with Chris to update the deed so that is fillable. We don't need to do everything by paper, and we'll use that also for the Woodside Cemetery. So we're in a transition now. We've agreed that if they, if we have a snowfall, that we will plow the roads in the cemetery. We'll actually take it over on January first, the actual management. That's what we've agreed to. If there are any burials, Chris will take care of those, and they do have some part-time staff. That'll work until December thirty-first. When I last spoke to Chris, he did not have any burials scheduled, but who knows? It was an important piece of legislation, and I would recommend adoption because, as I've said before, we do have a statutory authority to take the cemetery over. I think we all understand that, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Would anyone from the public like to address this resolution? Or is this ordinance, excuse me? Okay, counselors?
Mr. Mayor? I think I'd like to say something. And that is, I think it's important to add that this would be a cost-neutral because there's a trust fund that the association is required to keep and report to the state. Those funds that are held in trust then would be transferred to the city as well.
Right. Okay, any questions or concerns? You may call the roll.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Brinch?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mayor Snadley?
Yes. The ordinance is adopted with six votes. The rest of the ordinances coming up will not be voted on because it's first reading. And you may read the second one.
An ordinance by Oxford City Council authorizing the city manager to take all action necessary, including but not limited to negotiation and execution of a contract to purchase the real estate located at six-oh-three and six-oh-seven West Chestnut Street, which property is approximately two-point-three-one-six acres at a cost of three-hundred-eighteen thousand dollars for both parcels and utilize American Rescue Plan Act funds in making the purchase.
Okay, thank you very much. Jessica?
I'll fix that in a second. Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is our first major development in our goal of trying to increase affordable housing. The city of Oxford has conducted a housing needs assessment in 2020, which found that we had a critical need for affordable housing. The city Oxford, the Oxford City Council has adopted affordable housing as a top goal since 2020. In our research during that period, we have found that successful affordable housing programs in other communities often begin with city-owned land or the city working to acquire new land to be used for housing. The city's land ownership allows the city to attract developers to build housing and then also control the type of housing. We propose to use the American Rescue Plan dollars to purchase this land, and it's an allowable use under ARPA dollars. allowable use under ARPA dollars in the final rule. We intend to work with a nonprofit housing partner to manage and develop this land in several years, it's going to be a long-term goal, to develop affordable housing in the future. These are located at six oh three and six oh seven West Chestnut Street. Part of the appeal is that it is two point three acres that could then be developed into a little bit higher density project. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but we're also excited to take this step as a community.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone from the public like to address this ordinance? Okay, councilors have questions?
Can you talk through the phase? I mean, you say it's a long-term thing, I mean, in the short term, it's just simple ownership of two structures that might be rented. And so if it went beyond that, what are the kind of steps? So I'm thinking, if I were a neighbor, what's the long-term?
Yeah, so yes, there are two structures on there that may or may not be used for rental in partnership with that nonprofit partner that we're going to work with. And then in the future, we imagine that we would develop a higher density project on these two acres, but it's going to require a lot of funding and time to kind of get that together, and I imagined it would be a plan development process. There would be applications for low-income tax credits, trying to, excuse me, attract a private developer, looking at certain home funds and loans that could be used. So often to build this capital stack takes number, a number of years and rigorous scoring to see if you're eligible. But our nonprofit partner that we're working on a contract with is very adept at this, this is what they do in the county, they've had a lot of success, and so we're very excited to be working with them. The city does intend to maintain ownership of the land and then either like lease it at a very low rate to a developer so that in, in future years, we can control the type of housing that's on there or the type of rentals into the future.
So go through a process like any other developer?
Yes, and there's no concrete plans. I want to be clear, there's no concrete plans at this time, but as part of our strategy for affordable housing and knowing that we need to invest our Affordable Care Act plan, I cannot talk tonight, American Rescue Plan dollars, they need to be allocated by twenty-four and spent by twenty-six. We feel like the time we have with that, that the acquisition of land that can be later used for development is the wisest use of our dollars for housing, and that's what we're trying to present tonight.
Thank you. Other questions or concerns?
Super excited.
This aligns very well with one of our principal goals, so we're, I think all of council is very appreciative of the work that staff has done.
Thank you.
You may read number three.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-six fifty-four supplemental budget ordinance number ten to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Okay. And we will welcome Joe.
Thank you. This will be the last supplemental for the year, although since we're taking the cemetery over the first of the year, I will bring in one the first meeting in January, because we have to set up expenditures for that, that operation. So the first thing here on the supplemental is an additional seventy-five thousand dollar adjustment to budgeted salaries and fringes for fire EMS fund. The next one is to make an adjustment for budget expenditures for the employee benefit fund of initial two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars is what we expect that we'll need for, to get through this month. The next one is to make an adjustment to the budgeted revenue for property taxes in the general fund. We came in forty-two thousand three hundred nineteen and eighty-two cents over what we had budgeted, so this is just to match the revenue to the budget. The next one is to make an adjustment for revenue for income taxes in the general fund that is seven hundred sixty-three thousand one thirty-eight, and the fire EMS fund is one thirty-four nine seventy-seven. And those will probably change a little bit for second reading, because we'll have received all our receipts by the time that meeting takes place. The next one is to make, and this is hard to believe, but we make another adjustment to the revenue expenditures for hotel receipts in both the general and the hotel tax agency fund, an additional ten thousand dollars, just because the, this year has been a banner year for revenue for, for the hotel taxes. And then an additional, on the expenditure side, ten thousand dollars for, to transfer that money to enjoy Oxford. And again, that, those will only be if we exceed the revenue, that that'll actually happen. The next one is to make a budget adjustments to revenue expenditures for the transfer of funds from the general fund to the capital equipment fund and capital improvement funds. Based on where we were at the end of November, I'm suggesting we take a transfer six hundred thousand to the capital equipment fund and one million to the capital improvement fund. And this is basically due to the increase of income tax and also that we had some new hires in the general fund that didn't get placed until later in the year. And also, in twenty twenty-one, we had just, one of the reasons why we do this when we have excess money is in twenty twenty-one, we were drawing down in the capital improvement fund, six hundred twelve thousand five forty-seven. In twenty twenty-two, we were drawing down the fund balance by two hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So this money is basically going in there replenishing money that we've used in the past couple of years to keep up our capital improvements and by using the fund balance in those funds. The next one is to make a transfer from the water fund to the water improvement fund of two hundred ninety-seven thousand. And again, that's based on what it looks like we'll be doing for the end of the year, based on the end of November, the water fund. And the last one is to make a transfer from the wastewater fund of two hundred thousand to the wastewater capital equipment fund. And again, that's based on projections of what will be surplus for the end of the year. Be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Would anyone from the public like to address this ordinance? Hearing none? Councilors have any questions? Nope. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. For the public's edification, these will come up then as second readings at our next meeting, and that's when they will receive a vote. Okay, we will move now to announcements and communication. We'll begin with the city manager.
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-up items dealing with the Oxford Cemetery. So, you know, tonight you adopted the ordinance, and we'll get the, the, once the president signs the deed, we'll get it recorded, and then we'll have possession of the cemetery. But we also need to fill out some paperwork with the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Real Estate, Professional Licensing. We have to register the cemetery, pay a fee, it's a very, I think it's a twenty-five-dollar fee. We just pay it one time since we're a municipal operator. If we were a private operator, we'd pay that fee each year and have to file the registration form. We'll need to send them a copy of that ordinance, basically saying that we accepted the transfer, send them the registration application that I mentioned, and then we have to also provide them a list of people who can sell lots and a copy of our rules and regulations, which are similar to ours. So we'll get that to them. The advantage of getting it done before the end of the year is that then they do have, as Chris mentioned, an endowment fund, and they have to put in ten percent of the gravesite sales in this endowment fund, but once we take possession of it, we do not have to do that. And then they'll transfer the remaining funds to us in both that fund and their operating fund. So we want to get this all taken care of before the end of the year, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you, your honor.
You bet. Mike?
Chief? Feel that I have an obligation this time of year to remind folks, you know, as we're coming up on holiday breaks, to lock their doors and windows and take those steps. If you have any questions, follow our Facebook page, and we've got plenty of tips and videos that we'll be posting there. Sign up for our vacant house check system, you can do that online, and we'll keep an eye, and at very least, we have emergency contact information if you go. And if you see suspicious activity, please contact us, and we'll check it out and, you know, determine the steps to take from there. Also, just a reminder that for public safety alerting, NICSOL is something you can sign up for. It includes, you know, general public safety alerts, but also weather alerts and, you know, when you might need to move your car because of that dreaded snow that may come and cause a snow emergency. And then also, just a reminder that, you know, we, we look forward to our, some of our holiday events that we'll have. Our Cups and Kits event will probably be next Thursday, December fifteenth, where we take, take some youth to shop with police officers and have a nice meal, and we've had really good community support in the past with that. And definitely this year, Ted and Hagewood will host a meal at Leftfield Tavern for these, these kids. Walmart, the Oxford Community Foundation, and the Oxford Baptist Church have all contributed money that will make this possible. So looking forward to that, and, but when you see that on social media, because there will be a lot of police activity, it's just a fun event.
I'm sure, even though you announced it in advance, there will be posts, what's going on?
What's going on, yes, so. Anyway, just some reminders.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sure Oxford Talk will be a buzz. Joe?
Nothing.
Okay, Chief Dufford? Hi, Casey.
Good evening. I first want to thank you for your magical light-up Oxford skills on Saturday night. Holiday fest was Saturday, everything went quite well, other than if you see a giant white inflatable polar bear in some random front yard that belongs to us, so let me know. That, that came up missing. But what I really want to tell you was, we were awarded our grant through Nature Works for the ADA project out at the Community Park Playground. So we'll start working on the RFP for that project and get that information out, but the city has money allocated for twenty-three, plus this grant, which is forty-six thousand dollars. We'll still be looking for a little bit more money, we probably need around a hundred and fifty total to do everything we want to do. So I submitted another grant application today that I'll find out about in January, but if you know anybody that has some money they want to hand out, I'll take it. Thanks.
Thank you, Casey. Jessica?
Good evening. I just want to make a few updates. Many people saw an article in their journal news today about a one point five million dollar grant award that the city was awarded by the county, which was wonderful, and we're very excited. However, they cited my former proposal that had been withdrawn, and so I just want to clarify that we did propose for a one-stop social services center about eighteen months ago. But then with the law, the transition in staffing at both TOPPS and Family Resource Center and the tight timeline with the American Rescue Plan dollars, we decided to withdraw that application and instead pivot it to the renovation of the TRI Center for both the TRI and the seniors, with the secondary benefit of allowing Tama Wanda to move into the senior building for Amtrak, like the dominoes effect. We had asked for three million for that second proposal, and they awarded us the one point five. So that's very exciting, I'm speaking with a reporter tomorrow to kind of clarify that. And then I am also speaking with both the boards of the TRI and the seniors organization to like, well, can we still do this with half? And so we need to just have some conversations, and we'll decide what our scope and scale can be, to be determined. So I just wanted to kind of fill you in on that, so I've sent an email out to some people who were really paying close attention, but I wanted to make that aware for the public as well. And then secondly, I just want to say thank you to the Oxford Park and Recreation Department, Enjoy Oxford, Miami Activities and Programming, the Chamber, OCAC, and then our Streets and Police Department for a wonderful holiday festival. It takes a small army to put this on, these people work really long hours for setup and tear-down and cleanup in cold weather, but I, I really felt like I had walked into a Hallmark movie when I showed up, and it was the first time in ten years that I didn't have a job, like I just came. And it was really wonderful just to be a participant, and I'll say, my teenagers had just as good of time as they did when they were toddlers. So thank you to everyone for that. And then lastly, I'd like to invite you to our first public art reception at the city municipal building. That'll be Friday, December ninth, in partnership with the Oxford Community Arts Center. The city building will be open from six to eight PM, where you can walk around and meet the artist and look at the art that we have hanging on our wall. And at the same time, the OCAC will have their second Friday event with their art reception, and there's music starting at seven thirty. And a special thank you to Heather, Ashley, and our intern Eli, who are going to be hosting that event and have done all the promo for it, so thank you for all their help. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaking of Heather.
Yes, come visit me Friday, thank you.
Chris? Okay. Glenn?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alex?
Nothing.
Chanco?
Yeah, I came back from my housing lab in Chicago with Local Progress, and Nicola Rodriguez, interim director of Family Resource Center, was our, my invited guest. And it was so wonderful to be able to sit there through all these presentations of city after city of what they're doing in their town, and I can remember her saying, I had no idea there's all this stuff out there that is in states that are more heavily preempted than us, which means it's very possible for us to bring these ideas here. One of the big things that, or I'll just read off a short list, eviction diversion program, I realized how bad, well, I knew the evictions were bad, but I didn't realize how much more we should be doing to keep people in homes. I think that we've, we're spending a lot of effort on hopefully the emergency shelter, and then also expanding our supply of affordable housing, but there's so much we can be doing to try to keep people from being evicted. I mean, there's some cities out there that make it so that you have to try to go to mediation first before going to court, and that has been really, really helpful. There are places, lots of places, that provide legal services for people who are going through eviction, and it is a very tough process, especially when you don't even have the means for adequate representation. There's mixed-income neighborhood overlay districts, there's affordable housing preservation overlay districts, there are right-of-first refusal, like TOPA, like the tenant has the opportunity to purchase. The Section Eight Housing Income, Source of Income Discrimination is something that has great presence in Ohio, Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati. So that is something easily we could do here so that you cannot discriminate against someone with vouchers. The, there was a city council member from Nashville, Holby Sledge, who presented about their Barnes Housing Fund, and I told him how you had seen one of them, I'm assuming it's the same thing, so he was very curious about which housing, because he was one of the biggest proponents against it, or for it, sorry. So there's just so much we can do, and I'll be preparing together a packet before our city council retreat, which I'm assuming we're having in January, probably?
I'm set the date.
Okay. Good, gives me even more time. So having that prepared to try to pull together, what else can we be doing to have this multi-pronged approach to just keep people in their homes? And thank you, Ann, I didn't know you were going to come and talk about the award, I really, it meant a lot, and I know that, especially from that group of people who devote so much personal time towards so much good, so it really meant a lot, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So just to want to extend that thanks again, the holiday event was, it was really magical, and if you live in Oxford for a while, you just kind of get used to stuff, and it's fun to see things like, again, we've been interviewing candidates on campus, and you get to see your town through an external person's eyes. And it's those things that make it really, people, people coming from all over the country and interviewing at Miami, and the town helped sell, you know, them on Miami, or how you ever do that, and I know that your brother, you know, it was, wasn't it the, the winter festival that helped bring ragus to town?
They, they thought it was fake, they thought we hired actors.
And, and it was, there was great stuff going on Friday night, too, and so it's a really busy time, there's obviously so much going on, but, you know. And just commenting and appreciating how much certain departments, for example, I know police officers work all kinds of crazy hours, but so do Parks and Recreation staff and, and city maintenance staff, I mean, the setup. So there's a lot of being out after regular hours to make stuff like that happen, and people are not with their families at that time, and so really do appreciate that, to make it magical for everyone, so thank you.
Well, the thing that I wanted to say is, how already been said? Well, uh, the thing that I wanted to, uh, say is, how already been said well by Jessica and Dave, and that has to do with the holiday festival, I thought it was great. And, um, so, in addition to thanking all the people who were involved in it, I would, uh, like to especially recognize Casey. He has so much energy, and he goes out there and he just makes it happen. And, uh, he's a well-recognized in our community, and he does a great job. So, congratulations to you, Casey, you do a great job. You're very welcome. And with that, I would, um, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So may.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much, thanks all of you for coming.